...president of public meetings. Except in the second session that is defined by the Illinois Open Meeting Act. He charged public meetings with forcing members of the public to submit brief statements or make brief comments during the public comment part of the meeting. However, persons in attendance are not allowed to act in an unreasonable manner that alarms or disturbs another and provokes a future breach of the peace. This can include making loud, unusual noises, clapping, speaking out, or interrupting during a seat count meeting. One may not impede the performance of official duties. If any person acts in a disorderly manner at a public meeting and persists after being warned, the mayor and chairman can order the person to withdraw or be removed from the meeting. If the person refuses, they can be removed and fined under the Disorderly Conduct Statute. Disorderly conduct at a public meeting in Illinois involves any unreasonable behavior that disturbs others or disrupts the meeting, and it is subject to removal and penalties if it persists after warning. This also includes city employees as well as council members. Harvey Police Officers are present at public city council meetings to assist the chairman in preserving order. If any person is ordered to withdraw or leave the meeting by the mayor slash chairman and refuses, that person can be cited and criminally charged with disorderly conduct. The Harvey Police Department can escort the person out of the building if the person refuses to leave and physically resist our police department. That person can also be charged with resisting arrest. Under Illinois law, resisting arrest is defined as knowingly resisting or obstructing the performance by one known to be the person, to be a police officer, firefighter, or correctional institution employee of any authorized act within his or her official capacity. This constitutes a Class 8 misdemeanor for resisting or obstructing a peace officer, firefighter, or correctional institutional employee. The statute requires that the act of resistance must involve some physical act that imposes an obstacle that may impede, hinder, interrupt, prevent, or delay the performance of one's duties. Examples include struggling, wrestling, going limp, or physically aiding a third party to avoid arrest. Illinois law explicitly states that a person is not authorized to use force to resist an arrest by a known peace officer even if that arrest is believed to be or is in fact unlawful. Resistance of an unknown, resistance of even an unknown unlawful arrest by a known officer to violation of the state statute of people's first order two zero two zero Illinois. Thank you.
Good evening. This is the City of Harvey Council Meeting. Today is Monday, February 10th, 2025. It's 7:06 PM. I'm calling the meeting's quarter. I'll make sure I sign in myself. Okay, if everyone has signed themselves in as present? We do have a form of the absence of Fifth Ward, all persons down the grand well. Next on the agenda is the invitation to pledge allegiance. Pastor Harrison, will you be so proud?
Yes, sir. Good night. Let us look to Jesus, Father. We thank you tonight. We give you praise. We honor you, and we glorify your holy name. We thank you for your goodness, your grace, and your mercy, your love, and your kindness, Father. We thank you for the pieces that you have for us, Father. We might not have everything we want, but we do, we have everything we need. So we thank you for blessing our city, God. And we ask that you come into this meeting, be a presence, God. Give us the peace that we need, the understanding that we're here to hear, and bless the city to continue to move forward in Jesus' name and prayer. Then I am back.
Amen. Let the leaders reflect that. The Augment Department of the Grand Well has entered the meeting at 7:08. Next on the agenda is presentations. They are not immediately correct, and from that point, we go to the automatic reports. Sheriff Ward, Sixth Ward.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I want to read my report. Our Sixth Ward Augment wants to record Happy Black History Month. First and foremost, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge and celebrate Black History Month. This is a time to honor the achievement and contributions of resilience of African-Americans throughout history. It is also an opportunity for all of us, regardless of our background, to reflect on the importance of unity, progress, equality in our community. I'm excited to invite all the residents of the great Sixth Ward to our up and coming Town Hall, Town Hall meeting Saturday, February 22nd, from the hours of 10:00 AM to 12:00 North, right here at the City Council table. This event is sponsored by Sixth Ward Augment, myself, Tyron, and it's an opportunity to voice your concerns, share your ideas, discuss topics important to our community. Your input is vital, and I encourage everyone to attend. So stay connected. If you have any questions or need any further information, please don't hesitate to reach out to me at area code 708-516-2276. And I also will be sending out a mailer to let everybody know of this important event. I look forward to seeing each and every individual out there, and thank you on behalf of Sixth Ward Augment members. I had an opportunity this evening to attend a meeting. As you all well know, the social climate and the climate of our new president. In 16 days, they've arrested thousands and thousands of people. Well, I have some information regarding on behavior and how you should act in the case that one of these agencies come and knock on your door. You do have rights, and you should know. And I'd like for anybody that's interested to please contact me, and I could share what I've learned in that meeting today in regards to your rights. Thank you very much. Thank you, Augment. Free men. Of course, the Sixth Ward and the Fifth Ward's people.
Thank you, sir. Definitely, Black History Month is very important. This is a time to remember our leaders that have paved the way for not only our rights, but our freedoms. I take this opportunity very seriously, spending a lot of time with my daughters to just... All we do is, I'm sorry, we watch roots. That's our thing, we watch roots, and it's important because if you don't know where you came from, you clearly don't understand the importance of those sacrifices and for those men and women. Harriet Tubman to... Third, Third Group Marshall. I like to look at it from different avenues, if you would, and just spend that time with my daughters, just speaking to them. It's very important that we take time out to speak to our young ones and let them know what's important. And spend time with them, just really understanding those sacrifices that was made. So this is a very important time. I ask that you all would do the same, whether it be from politics to something in the legal system, whether it be something, you know, in the justice system, whatever it is, we have leadership and leaders in every particular avenue that you can possibly think of, and we should take time out to pay homage to our brothers and our sisters who have come before us, who have paved the way, who have made those sacrifices, and so that our young ones can understand what it means to truly make that sacrifice. But that being said, um... It's a word meeting coming up.
Chair recognizes the Third Ward.
Good evening. Thank you, city employees, for all that you do. You are appreciated. Thank you, Mayor, for your leadership in ensuring that our meetings are presented in a dignified manner, one of class and appropriate decorum. There is a group perpetrators activists with no clue on what it really means. Some of these so-called activists at one time had a relationship with the mayor until they learned they were unable to compromise his integrity. They don't realize they are wearing more of a groupie hat rather than an advocate for the people. One of them sabotaged a pre-approved project at no cost to the city by harassing and not setting boundaries to the staff of the agency, making them feel uncomfortable to the point they left. This wastes time and money for the city. A qualified and educated activist, one who conducts research and collects accurate receipts for debate, knows there's a way to advocate to ensure their safety, but I come to realize hurt people do anything for attention. One of them uses their privilege and protected class to demean and demise others for their own hidden agenda. This is Black History Month, and it appears all of us have forgotten what past leaders and activists endured with regard to human and civil rights for their people, people of color. There is nothing in the history where a person not of color was able to stand before our people to disrespect or talk down, no matter our differences, if we knew what it really meant. It was considered disrespectful to our own kind if we knew to boldly express our feelings toward injustice in their space, then go without consequences. Just because someone grows up around people of color their entire life doesn't give you permission or it passed to act like you have encountered the same injustice. We are elected officials. Our family and friends are not and shouldn't be subjected to pictures being taken, being harassed, or followed. Freedom of speech works best when conducted in a civil and respectful manner, not only to elected officials, but to those residents present who might not agree with your ideas as that it only diminishes what you call a cause. We supposedly do better than no better. So in saying that, all the solidarity tactics that have been used toward this administration, I dare, no, I challenge you to use the same mindset toward these businesses that have caused the city to be in this current state of debt. Not only will this speed up recovery for this great city and its residents, as this is what you say you are fighting for, it would also please the residents, as they have said over and over again, shut them down because if I have to pay, they have to pay. And that ends my speech. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes the Fourth Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I want to start off, I got some certain points that I want to be able to recognize. This is Black History Month, and I really want everybody to ask yourself, you know, how far have we really came? Like I always said, I used before when I use an example on the picture of the wall, and you look at all of America and how long it took for Afro-American residents to see, you know, how far we have come. When it comes to the freedom of speech, there are millions of, not just black people, millions of people, period, that have lost their life for the right of freedom of speech. This should be something that we should look at as respected. It's the way to do things, but we should never take that right away from anyone. With that being said, I have great disappointment in the city of Dalton with the brawl that happened in that meeting that night. Me, as an Afro-American, I really felt embarrassed, sad, disappointed, and ashamed. We fought so hard to even be able to sit in this room, and we get the opportunity to do it, we still show that we don't know how to exactly act. Can we govern ourselves? That's what other people say about our nationality. But I just want Harvey to see that we can find a way, this is our task to separate ourselves from cities that act in that type of war. I look for the mayor to be a leader, we're the players, and he's the coach. If there's a problem, a coach is supposed to keep things in order. If there's two teammates arguing, come in, sit them down, talk to both of them, come to a resolution, you know? That's what leaders do. I actually had a meeting with the mayor previously about my word expresses, and he told me that I'm only going to listen and not have a response. I even offered to shake his hand, and he wanted to shake my hand. But that's okay, because I looked at the words that Martin Luther King said, many of the words that he said. One of them was, "Never let anybody make you feel you are nobody." Number two, always feel that you account, and you have worth. Three, always feel life has significant, your life has ultimate significance in this world's day. With that being said, it's going to snow this week. Time is up. Thank you.
Chair recognizes the Second Ward.
Greetings, Second Ward and City of Harvey. Happy Black History Month. I want to continue to echo that. Today, I want to take a moment to uplift and pay homage to Ms. Gloria Taylor, former Third Ward Augment, the first female African-American elected to citywide office here in the City of Harvey in 1977. Her dedication to community and progress continues to inspire us all. It's that same commitment to service and transparency that gives us the hope for the future of Harvey. However, the law is not enough. We need action and accountability. I have submitted several questions on behalf of the Second Ward residents, Mayor Clark, and Corporate Counsel, yet I am still waiting for answers. These questions include, when will the six police clubs be completed? When will the 2024 Congresswoman Report be made public? When will Treasury Department be able to actually give a report? Can the automatic packet be a separate presentation so that they can see what legislation is being voted on? How has the 2.8 million from Congresswoman Rockley's office been allocated? When will Mayor Clark's areas receive increased control? What is the plan for boarding up of many homes? When will the next legislative, Donald Trump, Bill Clinton, and finance Tyrone Committee meetings be held? Why was the 2024 Republican Republicans' movement canceled? Right to access the living, the own properties, period, in 24 or 2025? How are underground water meters being bred? When will another retention pond be built? Will more residents like mine back here on Mole Street be forced out of their homes? Not only have these questions not unanswered, Mayor Clark, but when residents see clarity, are they now at risk of retaliation? If they speak up, will they receive a $500 ticket corporate counsel? Will they face false incarceration like myself? Building a better Harvey, that's your motto. Well, that takes all of us, the residents first, the four nine-member Rockley Council, city staff, partners, and agencies. It is our community, and public officials cannot operate in secrecy. So I leave you with this, and this administration, with this very question. What will it take to collaboratively serve the residents of Harvey with dignity, fidelity, and honor? Thank you, Second Ward and City of Harvey. I can be reached at 708-320-9214. And have a happy Valentine's Day, y'all.
Chair recognizes the First Ward.
I think I noticed what with the sticker, I've been ecstatic and keeping the microwave on, that would be helpful. Okay, Happy, uh, what did you call it? Happy Black History Month. You know, you don't have to be black in order to appreciate and celebrate Black History Month. I have been for a long time since it, when roots, when roots came out in 1977, my mom made it mandatory for the family to gather every Sunday, and it was a series, and it was very important. Black history has created so, so much awareness, and it's about time in 2025. We mentioned Mark Luther King. I'm not going to preach, I'm not going to say anything about it, but you mentioned, "Don't let anyone make you feel like a nobody." But you know what? You have to feel like a somebody individually before anyone can make you into anything that you don't want to be. We talk about freedom of speech. Yes, freedom of speech is very important, and I will be the first advocate to stand up for it, but we have to be sensitive, and we have to be understanding. In today's news on Channel 7, there was a minister that put up on his church sign, I believe it was in Washington, that heaven is only, heaven has strict immigration laws. Now, he is not pulling that sign down because why? He has a freedom of speech. Absolutely. But does that make it, I, Shirley Drowinsky agrees with it? Absolutely not. Is it going to be my fight to get that sign taken, the sign taken? No. There's little I can do. But there are things that we can do as individuals. There are things that we can do in the City of Harvey. This administration, we talk about retaliation. I don't know, some of you guys sat here and you saw what I went through in the previous administration. We saw that I too got kicked out. We saw that I was threatened in a letter. My God, I had Tom Darts, Sheriff's Department over here protecting us. So there are things that we have to do as a society. Vehicle stickers due February 12th. The snow is coming. We know our street department is going to do phenomenal, but we have to be mindful to park, and let's not park on the street, but keep in mind, if you're going to park in your garage, they don't snow, they don't remove the snow in the alleys until the very last. Police Department did an outstanding job regarding to a response by a drive-by. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is encouraged and appreciated. This is the only opportunity for the public to address the city council, our agenda items, and any other city-related business. In order to accomplish all business on the agenda and be respectful of everyone's time, council members will not engage in battle law with individual members of the audience, and no immediate action will be taken on any public comment issue. Please limit your comments to three minutes. No speaker may join his or her times with another speaker. Comments shall be courteous and respectful at all times. No person may use public comment for the purpose of campaign or advertisement. This is not a question and answer time. The council cannot engage in conversation with the public. Questions and concerns about operations should be addressed with city staff during regular business hours. We will proceed in this manner. I will call the first name to speak, and then I will call the follow-up name, follow-up. For instance, our first speaker will be Amir Shakur, followed by, looks like Shelby And so, according to Mr. Shakur, or Amir Shakur will speak. And then after him, Shelby Shale should be ready. When Shelby Shale gets ready to speak, I will call the next person, and every subsequent person thereafter. So, our first speaker is Amir Shakur, followed by Shelby Shale.
Good evening, everyone, city council and officials. My name is Amir Alakim Shakur, Minister and Leader of Free University National. I'm also a journalist for the Chicago Urban Daily, covering two coasts. Mayor, last Monday, we had sent a notice to all of the officials and the leadership in Harvey, as well as the leadership of the police department, we're asking for a cease and desist. That letter was also sent to the State's Attorney's Office because we, in our research, have seen that the city parking, under your leadership and the officials on the ground have been in violation of the Open Meetings Act. As one of the leading watchdog organizations in the United States, or some of the biggest civil rights cases in America, we would ask that you again would cease and desist. I wanted to come and talk to you personally, just to see if I could just really have you change path, because... Because the way that we see it, we didn't get a response, and our response was a brigade of police officers who met in front of City Hall. We felt like that was response enough to show that you were standing outside of our interest, as well as continuously standing outside of public interest. So at this point, we're asking, our organization is deep-rooted, including legal. We want you to avoid a legal showdown, but if it has to be that way, then so be it. We are asking for you to change your path. We're asking for you to stop violating the Open Meetings Act. Citizens who speak should not be arrested. It is unreasonable. Citizens who speak should not be publicly fired. It is unreasonable. And as someone who has had a prior arrest record in history of being arrested, we would think that you would be empathetic to the plight of your citizens. But at this point, we don't believe that you would change course. So in order to avoid that showdown, we're just pending, we would ask that from this point on, with open eyes and our ears on the ground, every meeting that you have going forward, that again, you would cease and desist. Also, the FOIA Act, which has been violated, we're also looking and researching that, and our FOIA request, our Freedom of Information request will be going forward. We are looking for the opportunity to challenge you again. We would hope that the City of Harvey officials on the ground change path. This is not the way to go. It's not legal showdown. Thank you.
Next is Shelby Shell, followed by Merdina Coleman.
Hello, Mr. Clark. I believe that we are going to become well acquainted. I understand that you and your team, um, have been reaching out to us. Is this my right, Talia Smith? You have been attempting to reach out and connect with the organization that I proudly represent. I am here to advocate as a member of INA and Jedediah Brown, and I am the individual that you need to be reaching out to. For the past few months, unbeknownst to you, my team and I have been boots on the ground, actively engaged in your city, responding to concerns raised by many of your fellow citizens of Harvey per their request. I want Harvey to be known for the strong, loyal, and extraordinary people that they are. During my time here, I have witnessed the warmth and hospitality of its people, who have graciously opened their homes and their hearts to me. However, my observations of your leadership paint a very different picture. I see a leader who seeks to intimidate and violate the rights of his constituents. Imposing harsh unlawful penalties for speaking or clapping is not only absurd, but also an affront to democratic values. These actions cannot and will not go unchecked. And I will be reporting you to the Office of the Executive Inspector General and the Illinois Attorney General for malfeasance in office. I also urge the members of the community to do the same. I have also discovered troubling details about your background. One of the things being a name change. Are you Chris or are you Clarence? Additionally, it appears that there may be legal concerns related to your qualifications to govern this city. Certain items should have disqualified you from the ability to run for office and be seated in your position. While I do not engage in doxing because it is both unethical and illegal, I am fully aware of the alleged real reasons behind your refusal to submit to fingerprinting. Furthermore, displacing residents for vanity projects reflects a complete disregard for the very community you claim to serve. Further, I will leave you with this scripture, Micah, chapter two, verse two through three. It reads, "When you want a piece of land, you find a way to seize it. When you want somebody's house, you take it by fraud and violence. You cheat a man of his property, stealing his family's inheritance. But this is what the Lord says: I will reward your evil with evil. You won't be able to pull your neck out of the noose. You will no longer walk around proudly, for this will be a terrible time." Happy Black History Month and Happy Valentine's Day.
Next is Merdina Coleman, followed by Kristen Clark.
Hello, Harvey, everyone. I have a problem here. Um, thanks for cleaning the streets and solving the streets. I came out one morning, and the streets could be assaulted, and I went out and come back. I parked my car, and I have a ticket on my car the next morning, which is Sunday. I would like to know, we have six wards here. How many policemen are standing, and do they have a beat of each, uh, ward that they're in? That's what I'd like to know. And I received a ticket, and because I parked on the curb, because I have a handicap sign, my husband has a handicap a little bit. And I come back Sunday morning, I have a ticket on my car, which cleans the streets. The mud and everything cleans the sewage. Okay, and I come back, best respect I get on the behalf, instead of knocking on my door and saying that, uh, it's a problem. You know, I didn't get that type of courtesy or respect. So I'm very confused right now. Thank you.
Next, we have Kristen Clark, followed by Ruby Downey.
Hi, everyone. If you don't know me, my name is Kristen Clark. Uh, I don't typically, people come here to express their concerns, um, and terrible experiences in the city. However, I would love to bring forth the positivity in the city. Before I start, I am the mayor's daughter, and I'm pretty sure I know him. Him? Guess you're wrong. I'm pretty sure I know him, but the back of my hand would like to address some of these things. First, his name is Christopher J. Clark. Let's put that to rest, let's let it go, it's Christopher J. Clark. And he has never changed his birthday or his social. He is also a resident of this city, running race, Micah asked, and I've lived with him a majority of my life, and the House Black Road is located on Page Eight. If you'd like to know more, go to meet the mayor on Fridays before you spread this information to those in the community. Now, onto the city. When the mayor first came to me and told me that he was running for this position, I immediately said, please don't, as I know this city is still with hurt people from the previous administration. And as we all know, hurt people hurt people. He then went on to say that it was God's calling for him to do his work, and at that point, I could no longer argue with him. Even though we were living a pretty great life while he was a successful attorney, I had to respect the dedication to God. I had the pleasure to watch the city improve over time. Although it is not perfect, the city has come a long way. From the street scammer known to new businesses brought to the city, and let's not forget that the first thing he did when he got into the office was get rid of those ghost employees so that those, um, that were here and working to serve the city were not, um, you know, the tax money was not going to waste. I thank you, Mayor Clark. Um, and he says all the time that he would not be able to do anything without his team, so thank you to his administration as well. Mayor Clark is not perfect, neither am I, nor are you. So I ask that the residents move with grace, have an open heart, be respectful, and understand that all great things take time. Nothing happens overnight. To the administration, I ask that you all move with grace, be respectful, and understand that residents just want the best for their lives and their children's lives. To everyone, be respectful. The city cannot move forward if everyone hates one another and hates each other. Come together and work together and watch how much greater this city can become. Again, thank you to the administration, and thank you to the mayor for your wonderful leadership. Be blessed.
Next. Next, we have Ruby Downey.
Good evening, everyone. I welcome each of you and love each and every one of you, and especially my administration. This is our administration. Whatever is wrong, and if you think that is wrong, you have the opportunity to express it, but you also have the opportunity to make it better. Harvey cannot exist without people. And we need each and every one of you to express yourself rather than always negatively leave. Also, you need to uplift it. Now, I have lived, and the mayor's always saying that I should not say this. But I'm going to tell you truthfully, I've lived through five administrations, and none of the administrations have put the work that this administration has done will do, and I am vitriolistically letting the changes. They were very, very bad. I'm going to just tell you that. Cut me off when you get ready, because I've got more to say. You have to work together. You cannot be defiling. You cannot be bike fighting. You cannot be saying, I can't do this, but look at what they're doing. Why aren't you out there helping? We need each and every one of you. I love each and every one of you. You never send me, you call me, you got a problem? If I can't solve it, I call somebody else, and then I'll also say, call the mayor. If you can't get a, if, if, the direct answer from it, there are other people that will help you. We are available here. We should not be fighting. We should not be divided. The enemy is outside of that door down those stairs, not here. Use D E I. That's diversity, equity, and inclusion. And that's what we need every day, not tomorrow, not the day after. I mean every day, because they're gonna take it from you. They see what you're doing. You're dividing yourselves more and more, and they talk about the alcohol there, because don't help them. Leave them there. Can't you see what happened in the last four years right over there? And don't take it. You know the half is not good.
And that's exactly what we're gonna do. Thank you very much, Mr. Studdard. We really appreciate you. Thank you very much, Mr. Studdard. All right, all right. Thank you, everyone, for the public comment. Now on to probably what I would probably consider to be the most exciting part of this meeting. Y'all all ready? Uh, it's department reports. So we will start with our wonderful and illustrious city administrative grandees. Followed by the police department.
Good evening, community members, city council, staff, and mayor. As your city administrator, I stand before you today with clear mission, destined to ensure each department within our city is operating at its highest potential while being mindful of our resources via materials, energy, finances, or time. Our focus is not merely on maintaining a status quo, but on creating an innovative solution to enhance our customer service and address the needs of the community. At the heart of our approach is simple yet a practical model. We are in the problem-solving, solution-giving, customer-service business. Each of our departments are committed to listening to our residents and providing a competent solution to the challenges they face. This commitment to communication will guide us as we work to enhance the quality of life for every citizen. To streamline our operations, we have started digitizing our processes. This will move, this move will not only modernize our systems, but also foster smoother interactions across departments, ultimately leading to a more efficient and effective service delivery. In addition to our day-to-day operations, we'll be dedicating significant efforts to our security grant funding for vital infrastructure improvements, including streetlights, curbs, sidewalks, and public service. We also recognize the necessity of updating our outdated municipal codes. By doing so, we'll ensure that our operations are clear and fluid, allowing city governmental functions seamlessly. This essential function for a build, uh, this is essential for building trust and transparency with the citizen. Furthermore, I'm committed to ensuring that our boards and committees are organized and functional. Their work is vital to success. We must support them in every way possible, more specifically, our police and fire pension boards. We are fighting to ensure that all officers are entered into the pension once hired with the Harvey Police Department. The pensions will, uh, issue has spanned over decades, but we'll get this resolved, and we'll get this resolved this year. Equally as important is our connections of tax, our collection of taxes and revenues owed to the city. For decades, the city have not collected taxes owed by the municipality, um, entities listed in Section Three of our municipal code. Other priorities will be renewal and updating of all of our municipal contracts and agreements. This is essential to maintain accountability and ensure that our partnerships serve the best interests of our city. Moreover, I'll work diligently to ensure that all departments are focused on adhering to policies and procedures that promote smooth and consistent operations. This is critical for fostering a professional environment where our staff can thrive. Looking ahead to twenty twenty-five, I know that we have a fifty-year ahead of us. I'm excited about the opportunities that lie before us, and I'm committed to working to grow and build a better Harvey. That ends my report.
Thank you. Next, we have the police department, followed by the fire department.
Dear Mayor, council members, and residents, I'm pleased to address you once again this time regarding the Harvey Police Department's strategic vision for two thousand and twenty-five. Our focus is on enhancing community engagement, officer wellness, and maintaining the safety of all residents. Through proactive initiatives, we aim to strengthen bonds between the law enforcement and the community, and continue to reduce crime to create a safer environment for everyone in the city department. With that, there are a few things we're gonna be working on this year. Number one, community involvement. Our focus is on fostering a more united community policing relationship to increase engagement. By organizing a range of outreach events, educational activities, public safety forums, and ensuring a regular police presence in neighborhoods, our goal is to establish a deep and trusting connection with the community by the end of the year. We will be reintroducing the Police Citizens Academy and community policing programs to educate citizens about law enforcement practices and to cultivate strong relationships between the police and the community. Number two, a deeper understanding of the law for the Harvey Police Officers. Enhancing our officers' knowledge of law enforcement ethics is a top priority of the agency. We are committed to dedicating time to researching and studying relevant topics to enhance ethical decision-making and ensure consistent application of ethical principles in all aspects of our operations. Dating instructional sessions during our roll call periods will provide valuable information to our officers, helping them to better understand their roles and how it's best to sit those in the community who need support. Number three, improved response times. Efficiency in responding to emergencies is crucial. We are dedicated to reducing response times for a call for emergency calls for service, ensuring that swift help reaches those in need. Today, the average police officer answers an estimated seventy to eighty percent of calls which are neither criminal nor directly related to law enforcement. However, the public continues to base its satisfaction with police services on sparse response times, largely because it increases the feeling of security and is thought to deter crime. Several studies have established that if the police take less than five minutes to respond to a call involving crime, the probability of making an arrest is sixty percent. When that time, when the time exceeds five minutes, the arrest probability drops approximately twenty percent. The Harvey Police Department has already taken steps to ensure that delays do not occur in the areas over which we have control. Some methods we plan to implement this year to overcome delays will include a broader system of calls for service. Um, as well as, some of you may have heard during our last presentation, that we partnered with Cook County Sheriff's Police Department for their Treatment Response Team to help with calls for service that don't necessarily require a police officer. We may be able to put officers back to the streets so they can handle more priority calls for service. Number four, enhanced communication strategies. Effective communication is the cornerstone of trust and transparency. Our objective is to implement a communication Our objective is to implement a communication system that provides real-time information to residents, enables the submission of anonymous tips, and establishes a platform for active community involvement. We are looking to roll out a one-line transparency hub. This transparency hub provides comprehensive access to information, policies, and data, offering clarity about our operations and our practices. Our goal is to foster trust, accountability, and open communication between the department and the residents of the city. We are also improving our social media presence to keep everyone updated. To this, we've recently hired crime analysts slash social media specialists. Stay tuned for more updates on Facebook and some of our other platforms. Lastly, number five, crime prevention and reduction. Our commitment to reducing crime is unwavering. By implementing more prevention programs, increasing police presence in high-crime areas, and utilizing technology like a real-time crime center and a citywide surveillance counter program, we hope to succeed in our efforts to make Harvey a safer place for all of our residents. We will also continue collaborating with federal and state agencies to bolster, to further bolster our crime prevention and reduction endeavors. Now, this is last, I apologize. Lastly, we will prioritize the mental health of our officers. Ensuring that all officers have access, ensuring all officers access confidential and compassionate counseling services is paramount. This service is available to every officer, from new recruits to seasoned veterans. Some of you, some of you may ask why that's important. Our officer's physical and mental well-being is essential to their ability to serve you effectively. When police officers are well-supported and have good mental health and physical well-being, it directly benefits residents by leading to better decision-making, improved community relations, increased effectiveness in de-escalating situations, and a greater sense of safety within the community. By prioritizing our, by prioritizing their well-being, we aim to provide the best possible customer service to our residents of the city department. As we embark on these ambitious initiatives, we seek to, we seek the support and collaboration of the community, local leaders, and residents. Together, we can transform Harvey into a safer and more connected community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the Fire Department, followed by Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. The Harvey Police Department was to aim to enhance our level of service for 2025. Uh, the first thing we were going to do is upgrade our fleet. Our fleet is, um, kind of old, twenty-plus years of age. So we're going to be looking for alternate funds to help us upgrade that. Um, tomorrow, we are leaving, um, to go finalize our final inspection for our new engine. So hoping that during this month, we have our new engine. Uh, we also want to promote, uh, continued education for our personnel. So right now, my, uh, both of my shift commanders, they are in one of, one of the class in the state of Illinois. It's the highest class in the state of North, and they are enrolled in. And I'm also been accepted, um, in the National Fire Academy, which is the highest class that any fire chief in the United States can take. Also, uh, we want to enhance our fire prevention division so we can continue to educate, um, our public on how to prevent fires. A lot of times, a lot of our structural fires that we have in the city party can be preventable. So we're going to do a big push this summer so we can start educating how we can prevent those, um, fires. Also, uh, we are going to continue to promote diversity, equality, and inclusion with our department uh, because our community is made up with, with so many different people and with our department, we'd like to promote that. So that's one thing that we're going to continue to push for. Also, we'd like to host, uh, Illinois State Fire Marshal classes that are certified. So instead of us going out, we can bring, uh, state serving classes to our fire stations so our personnel can have the training if they need it. Also, we're going to develop a five-year strategic business plan. So all of this that I'm talking about, we're going to come up with a plan to implement and also to be able to execute. So we're going to develop that plan for five years. Also, uh, we'd like to purchase ten sets of turnout gear. A lot of our members, um, turnout gear is at the end of life. So we're going to be looking for alternate funds to support the replacement of that. Also, um, one of our goals is, is to replace twenty-two, um, air packs that our personnel use, that they use to go on to structural fires. Um, our air packs are seventeen years of age, and we're going to be looking for alternate funds to replace those because those, uh, a single air pack is costing almost eighty, eighty-six hundred dollars to replace. So we're going to be looking for that in, uh, for the future. Also, we're going to continue to, uh, educate and promote our CPR program so our residents and non-residents can have the opportunity to be certified as a CPR. Uh, we also going to do our annual fire inspection process to make sure that it's effective and that it can be improved. So we're going to be looking at, uh, ways to continue to, uh, do our fire inspections, um, along with working with the building department. And one of the, um, lastly, uh, we're going to develop the kids academy because our kids need some type of career at an early age so they can, uh, prepare for the future. A lot of times, our kids like to be firefighters and not police officers. So, um, we're going to be, um, sponsoring, we're going to have our kids cabinet, um, for the seventh time. So that's, um, pretty much ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have...
Yes, I have two more things for fire.
Fire?
Yes, fire. Fire has a grant to replace fire...
Please open the, uh, microphone.
Sorry about that. Fire also has a grant to replace fire hydrants this year. So we're looking to go out to vehicle of fire hydrant grants, um, and that will be replaced this year. They are also going to be rechecked for fire hydrants throughout the community this year to make sure we know exactly which fire hydrants have issues so we can start addressing those issues.
Thank you. Next up is Public Works, followed by Economic Development.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, residents of the city of Harvey. Um, as a superintendent of Public Works, we oversee two vital divisions, Streets and Water. I'm aware of the essential role these services play in the day-to-day life of our city. Streets and water are not just a basic utility. They are the very foundation upon which our community thrives. Without reliable infrastructure in these areas, we cannot ensure the quality of life that our residents deserve. Running successful and efficient community requires great teamwork at every level of leadership, proper planning, critical thinking, clear communication, solid financial management, and most importantly, resident feedback. All contribute to achieving our shared goal. When we come together and align our efforts, we see the results benefit everyone in this community. Today, I want to share with you some of the strategic goals that Public Works is focused on for 2025. First, we are committed to redeveloping our training programs for both new and current employees. Training, training is critical to suspense of any department, and we recognize the need to continue to improve in this area. Currently, our training consists mostly of hands-on, in-house instructions. But moving forward, we plan on expanding this by incorporating training from external sources such as our vendors and the state of Illinois. Additionally, we're introducing video training opportunities to provide more flexibility for our staff by increasing the varied variety of training available. We aim to encourage and motivate our employees. Motivated employees are more confident in the work, which makes the department run more efficiently and ultimately leads to better service for the community. Furthermore, we plan on adding more certified training opportunities across our divisions to ensure our team is prepared to respond to the workforce deficiencies when we need it. Next, we are focused on reducing response time to residents' complaints and concerns. We understand that time and communication and resolutions are essential for maintaining trust and satisfaction within our community. Moving forward, once our concern is received, we will aim to address this within three, five business days. To improve our, to improve our ability to handle these concerns, we are excited to announce the addition of two golf pilot employees to our department. This two-person team will help us cover more ground and address a larger number of residents' complaints, ensuring that more issues are resolved and attacked. Lastly, we are working diligently to complete a comprehensive inventory of our lead lines throughout the city in compliance with the 2024 U.S. government mandate for the replacement of lead lines. This is a critical, critical step in ensuring the safety of our water systems and well-being for our residents. We will share more details with you in the coming weeks of the expanded process of inventory and replacing these lines. At the core of everything we do is a goal of addressing issues and fulfilling our responsibilities in an efficient and effective manner. Whether it's maintaining our streets, ensuring clean water systems, providing proper training for employees, responding to residents' concerns, or complying with labor regulations, we are dedicated to delivering these essential services. We, we, we plan on delivering these services with care and attention to detail. Our aim is to ensure that every task is completed properly and that we maintain an open-minded communication with the residents who rely on us every day. In closing, I would like to take a moment to thank our residents for their patience and understanding. Your cooperation has been invaluable. As we truly preach this support you continue to provide, we would also like to extend our gratitude to the city officials for their assistance in these efforts. Together, we are working towards building a better Harvey, and we gratefully for everyone's dedication and hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Economic Development, followed by Finance Department.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. My name is Caesar Suarez. I serve as the Economic Development Director. And another hat I wear is I serve as a planning official as well when you go for planning and zoning matters. And I wanted to cover, uh, the sort of the goals for 2025. I wanted to start with the sort of the concept of economic development, a brief definition. Uh, economic means wealth and developed means with building. And the goal really is to build wealth for the city of Harvey. And what I wanted to share is four key goals in doing so. Uh, I think the first thing always is, um, how do we facilitate jobs, uh, growth, and investment? I mean, the key focus is how do we work with investors? Attract them here and make sure we facilitate the entire process of investing their, uh, their money, their time, and their talents in the city of Harvey. And, uh, so I really think through those processes, and I wanted to share a few things we can do in that area. Uh, one of the things we do is zoning, zoning clearances, and making sure that if a business wants to locate, they need to find out where to locate. So we help them with location assistance. What properties do they want? And we find out what that need is. Uh, the second thing is, can you do what you want at that particular property? And that's really a use, a zoning use, and those are zoning clearances, and we work through that process. And then they find out that they like the property and, uh, but they have to have, there's maybe some gaps in financing. And there's where we work out redevelopment agreements that the council approves. And it's very important to have that because without that, they wouldn't proceed with their investments. And then we have Class Eight applications. We're going to see a lot coming through, I believe. There's a pipeline of about eight of them coming forward. And when you do all that together, the bottom line is we're facilitating the growth of jobs and investment in, in Harvey. So that's one thing that I do as a goal, jobs and investment. The second one is, uh, placemaking, and that is, uh, building quality-of-life assets. And when you look around and you see all the infrastructure that's being done by a lot of us that are here, the grants that are making that possible, that's, that's just phenomenal work. But there's really one key asset that I think is so important that has come through, and that is properties, uh, private properties that are available as well as city properties. And how do we take that and really build upon that? And there's a lot of opportunity for properties and how we develop that. So one of the key things, a major goal, a lot of my time that we spend is building, facilitating a comprehensive housing development program. The council approved one in particular on December twelfth with a developer. And what they're going to be doing is building new single-family homes. They're going to rehab your homes as well as, uh, demolishing buildings all, all in one package. And we would like to put together, uh, to, to see that we can really grow with and use the same procedures, methods, and, and agreements with other developers. So excited about building quality of life through the property and the assets that we have in property. Another thing, another goal is really of market and promote the city. And we certainly got to get better at that in terms of trying to corral all the investors. So we have, uh, businesses in our business, uh, businesses in Harvey. There's over, uh, approximately three hundred businesses, uh, four hundred and fifty contractors. Uh, we have a list of developers as well as, while we're, we're trying to build these lists because once we get them, we can communicate and say, "Come to Harvey, build in Harvey, invest in Harvey." And so, uh, the goal would be to start marketing, promoting the city of Harvey and all our assets, assets that we add to them. And so I'm excited about building it up, and we certainly got to mature in, in that area. And lastly, none of this can happen without team building, which is the fourth goal, is team building. And we just have to collaborate, collaborate with stakeholders and partners. And there's so many in this room. There's also a lot of people outside that also work in building a better Harvey. And so I'm excited to work with them, and, uh, there's just so much on, on plates to do. It's still a little time, but I think with all of us coming together, uh, I do believe we'll, we'll make a, a good ride in 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the Building Department, followed by Communication Department.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Administration, uh, staff, and Harvey residents. Uh, as we set for 2025, we are excited to share our vision and key initiatives that will drive positive change and growth in our community. Our focus this year is on community engagement and the revitalization efforts to ensure thriving and sustainable and sustainable future for all. First, efficiency and effectiveness. Our main goal in 2025 is to have a better efficiency and effectiveness using new programming and digital, uh, digital performances. This will give the residents, business owners, and contractors a more effective and efficient way of connecting business with our department. Next, customer satisfaction survey. We understand the needs and concerns of our customers, uh, and our residents is crucial. To improve community engagement and services, we will implement a customer satisfaction survey to gauge customer experience and identify areas of improvement. This initiative will be launched by the end of our first quarter, first quarter. And lastly, abandonment and demolition program expansion. Addressing blighted properties remains a top priority. Last year, we successfully completed twenty-three demolition and abandoned properties, making way for safer and revitalized spaces in 2025. We will actively investigate additional funding sources to expand our abandonment and demolition program and accelerate our efforts in removing blight while exploring opportunities for redevelopment. We are excited and optimistic for a greater Harvey in 2025, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we have Communications, followed by Water.
Good evening. I'm Alexia Hall, Director of Communications. Um, I'm excited to share our 2025 goals review. These initiatives are designed to strengthen transparency, improve engagement, and ensure that every resident stays informed and connected to our city. We believe that strong communication starts with direct dialogue. That's why this year, we will host community town halls, creating opportunities for open dialogue between residents and city leadership. By creating these spaces for honest conversations, the city is ensuring that the voices of our residents are heard. Our monthly newsletter, the Harvey Pulse, is a key resource for keeping residents informed. And in 2025, we are committed to increasing its online readership. We will make it more mobile-friendly and increase promotion across all platforms to ensure that more residents stay informed and have easy access to it. Timely direct communication is essential today. That's why we will begin a mobile-friendly email campaign this year, which will provide you with city updates, emergency alerts, and event announcements straight to your inboxes. So we're going to meet you right where you are. Your input matters, and that's why we're introducing resident surveys to collect feedback on city services, communication efforts, and community needs. The first survey will launch in the first quarter of the year, and your insights will help shape a city that works for everyone. And lastly, a well-maintained website is essential for effective communication. We're going to focus on keeping it up to date, improving local accessibility, and making it easier to navigate so residents can find information that they need when they need it. So with all that being said, I invite you all to be a part of this effort. I invite you to attend the town hall, to subscribe to our newsletter, to sign up for email, email updates, and to take part in our surveys. Information can always be found on our Facebook page, our YouTube channel, and you can always go to our website at cityofharveyil.gov. Your participation is essential to making these initials, these initiatives successful. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Water Department, followed by... Next, we have the Water Department, followed by Senior Services.
Good evening. My name is Loretta. I am the Water Department Manager. One of my goals for 2025, my focus goals is building community trust by helping residents feel valued and understood, by elevating our customer service from a basic function to a powerful asset. Residents will have a wonderful experience when need arises for increase. Um, improving meter accuracy reading. We are planning this year to update outdated water equipment. This will improve the accuracy of billing. Um, sorry. By doing so, updating these, the equipment, this will increase the billing transparency. We designed a monthly billing statement, also to clear outline all usage history, comparison to previous months. Um, communication, that's another focus of my, I'm sorry. I'm super nervous. Another of my focus for, goals for this year is communication, engaging with the residents, um, communicating with them, like sending out information, how to check for leaks, how to, um, I'm sorry. I'm like super nervous.
So our water service and our water, uh, service probably is being updated. So we're digitizing our system throughout the entire department, including our water meters. Our water meters have been outdated for decades, leading to, unfortunately, leading to misreads and water palpitations. So we're focused, we have a $1.5 million grant now to update the meters. Unfortunately, that's nowhere near enough to replace all the meters in the city. Actually, it'll only replace a fourth. So one of our focuses is to obtain grants, so we can replace all the meters throughout the system, um, to digitize that system. So your meters, although they're in the homes, you can ride past and get an updated water meter, uh, reading without coming in the city hall. So your water meters, so your building won't be fluctuating all over the place. Another thing that we're updating is the look of your bills. The look of your bills are outdated, and we don't believe they provide enough information. So we're trying to give you more information on your bills, so we're working with the water building system to update the look on the bills and the communications in the bills. Um, we updated communications in the bills through, what's it called? Your set. Water insects. Water insects, to update communications on what's going on throughout the department. We're improving our customer service by enhancing everything in the department, our equipment, our scanning in all of our past due or outdated information, making sure you get water cards, and we want to make sure it's easy for you to pay your bills. So we're trying to enhance how you pay your bills, like if it's through text messages, emails, any other way, we want to be able to, that you could pay your bill any way possible, uh, whether it's the water meter box, or if you want to come in, that should be an option, but it shouldn't be the only option for you just to come in. So there's a lot of enhancements going on in the water department.
Thank you. And thank you. Uh, next, then we have Senior Services.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and to my fellow colleagues, my coworkers, um, that I work with. As a senior service director, I have to work with every department in this entire city. I have to be personal with the, the seniors in this wonderful city. Our doors are always open to every senior that comes into our office. Veterans, women that lost their husbands, widowers, parents with, grandparents with children that are looking for help. Senior Services is a very important department. I realized how important it was when I came, became involved in government. And I learned a lot of things that I thought was in the, the constitution that we take to graduate from high school, but when you get in politics, you find out it's quite different. It doesn't apply. Today, I want to talk about some key points that I'm learning about our community in Harvey, which I'm just responsible for, but it also extends over to Thornton Township where I had the liaison, dealing with seniors there too. I had to travel between all the surrounding communities to come to this point of my discussion today. I want to talk about three things that I'll elaborate later. Senior Services wants to host a monthly focus group for senior residents. We want to host it. In order to determine the area of concern, no one has asked us seniors, what is it that we're dealing with? The government hasn't assisted us with housing struggles when our kids are grown and moved on. Who cuts our grass when agencies in our surrounding communities don't cut it anymore? Who cuts our, who chuffs the snow when there's no kids that don't have a, a trailer? Seniors are going to come to this focus group, and we're going to talk. What we able to do at this meeting is to have a good meeting, go into different groups in buildings, have coffee and talk, until we come up with a plan that addresses our needs. How we're going to act when we talk to a legislator about the things that we need to be addressed as seniors. Two, educate and inform seniors regarding technology by carding organizations that can help make our residents more technology efficient. I just want to remind the younger generation that a lot of times with our parents, we send you out to school to learn these technologies, but we expect you to go out and get them and bring them back and teach us. Seniors are faced with the, the ultimate possibility of not being able to communicate with the computer, use their phones. The world is moving so fast for us that we need help. So we're going to address that in Senior Services. We're going to take time by going to agencies and asking to donate some time. We're going to figure out how to take, get grants to take people to places where they can learn, use the colleges to help us out, use any means possible to keep us into the future. The third is create a volunteer committee group of seniors. I can't do it by myself, or Senior Service can't do it by itself. We need seniors to tell each other about how are we going to get a committee to address whatever it is that affects us in the city of Harvey. We want to stand up our department, the base, to be able to reach more seniors. You may not know that a lot of seniors, we are, they're suffering with medical bills, medicine deficiencies. We got to work with the hospitals that's in this community to be more proactive for us, help us to deal with foods that we're not eating, the, the desert that we live in. We just don't live on alcohol and cigarettes. We have active lives we want to, to, to enjoy, and we just got to start renovating Harvey. Senior Services is, is, is focusing on things that I, that I remember why I ran. And I don't see it. So the, the three subjects I just shared with you today are very important, that we've got to take care of the seniors. We got to move them around. They got to do things. They got to learn more. It's, it is about us. My job is totally strictly about focusing on seniors, seniors only. They are the backbones of our community, that take care of grandkids, that take care of you, that giving us advice. That's what we, that's what I listen to with our, on the phone. I listen to their concerns about water bills, how they can pay it. I listen about where, who can I call? I have to call my department ed here to get them to call them, to let them know that they've been heard. They'd like to hear a voice. That's what Senior Services does. And that's what we can continually do. That is my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to start this off with hallelujah praise to the Lord. But I can tell you right now, I have been filled with something that I have not been filled with in a mighty long time, and the Spirit has come into this place. I don't know about you, but I know about me. I know exactly what's going on. Okay, I tell you, for some odd reason, I feel so invigorated. I feel so enlightened, I feel so blessed, that I wish all those blessings would happen with each and every one of you, even those people who don't like me. I still wish you the best. Let me tell you, now, happy, happy, happy Black History Month. Thank you so much, and thank you so much for all of those who have come before us, who have done all the things that they have done, uh, to, to, to allow me to be in this seat, but allow all of us to move forward with the lives that we have now. I mean, it is, it is absolutely wonderful what those people went out and did, and how those people sacrificed so that we could be here today. You know, now, some people don't understand that, you know, hey, look, I, I don't know what to say to those folks, but I know doggone well that there were many a people that have sacrificed themselves so that we could have all of the things that we have, and I am so grateful. So let me tell you a little bit about what's going on with the, first of all, the mayor's office. We had a meeting this week with CSX, because we know that we've had some issues as far as our railroad problems are concerned, am I right? And so at the end, like, y'all ain't got to call and respond to us now. I know this might sound like church, but we ain't got to go there yet. But I will tell you this, we are talking about increasing and improving our relationship with CSX, so we can improve our railroad traffic throughout the city. I believe that one of the ways to do it is to have that conversation, and so we had that conversation this week, and it was very good. Um, they are doing a diagnostic on what's going on on these rails, so they can have a better idea of, of how it is impacting not only the city of Harvey, but the other communities around it, so I'm grateful to them. There was also a very successful homeowner's workshop, homeownership workshop this past weekend, and I want to thank, of course, Jane and T, but also Caesar for helping to put that together, and all of those who attended, all the staff who attended. Before I move in there, speaking to staff, I want to thank the staff again for the presentations, and we just continue to get better and better and better, and the more we do it, the better we will get. So I am just so excited about everything that you guys are going to do in the future. We've also recently met with the religious leaders, and we will continue to do so. Um, I want to make sure that our religious leaders know that they have a voice here in this city, and so we are member of them, so we will continue to do so. I think our next, the next, we have another quarterly meeting coming up, is that correct? Has it? And, um, we're going to start working together and embracing each other to try to move this city forward. Now, vehicle stickers. Give me one second. I don't look like Marco Rubio or something like that. Did anybody get that reference? Nobody? Okay.
Yeah.
Put them on. Vehicle stickers. Get your vehicle stickers, please. Um, as, uh, all the woman, Druski reminds you, it's February twelve. Please get your vehicle stickers. Um, they really help us, and believe it or not, you know, with all the things that we need to do in this, in this city, um, you know, with our roads, and as much as we need to do, you know, the vehicle stickers are, are part of it, because it's actually you playing your part, saying that you care about the places in which you live. When I got in, uh, in twenty nineteen, one of the very first things we did was we reduced the vehicle sticker amount from fifty dollars to thirty, not thirty-five dollars, to make it more affordable for everyone in the city. That's what we did. So I am asking that you, please, 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 you, please, get your vehicle stickers, um, given the time, so you don't have to, I counted it to fourteen, because it was always on Valentine's Day, when they're fifty-four. February fourteenth, so you have to February fourteenth. But please get the, um, please show your support for the city that you save, that you love. All right. So now that we got that out of the way, all of the, unfortunately, I want to give y'all some phone numbers now. Well, if, if they don't want to stay, I want to mention to everybody else that's, I want to give you the number to the Illinois Attorney General's office, in case you don't have it. That number is three one two eight one four three zero zero zero. That is three one two eight one four three zero zero zero. There's also a Springfield number of two one seven seven eight two ten ninety. Three two, that's two one seven seven eight two one zero nine zero. In addition to that number, I'd also like you to have Cook County State's attorney's number. That number is three one two, that's in this office, good information. Three one two six zero three one eight eight zero. Once again, three one two six zero three one eight eight zero. And then finally, well, no, that's not enough, so I'm not filing. There's the Department of Justice. The Department of Justice number is two oh two five one four two thousand. That's two zero two five one four two zero zero zero. And finally, here's another number, that is the Attorney Registration and Disciplinary Commission. For those who don't believe that I'm an attorney, you can call them at three one two five six five two six zero zero. Three one two five six five two six zero zero. Now, the main thing, what I really would like to see is the next time somebody will come up making allegations and accusations of this administration, would you please bring some evidence with you? Or at least call those people and give them the evidence, so they can do what they need to do, because we moving forward. We got things to do. Am I right now? Am I right, or am I right?
Right.
All right. So we got stuff to do. So we got stuff to do. And, you know, all of this little show and everything, it means absolutely nothing. And you can't come up here saying that you represent somebody who will call a black woman a B in the middle of a meeting and claim to have the high ground. What'd they say? How dare you? You can't do that. You can't claim that you have the high ground after behaving that way. I just don't understand some people, but I know what it is. And so for those of you who are remaining, if y'all just bury me just a few more, it's because I wouldn't do for them the things that they wanted me to do for them. That's why. I wouldn't make them the real estate, the exclusive real estate broker for the city. Okay? I wouldn't go ahead and support them politically. I wouldn't do all those, and normally I won't talk about it because I think and I won't put people's business out in the street. But they feel like it's okay to put mine out there, so let's talk about it for a minute. Now, the reason why you guys saw me get up and go talk to that lady right there, because that's my mother, for those of you who don't know. Now, this is the last time I'm going to address this issue. The very last time. I feel like I'm Barack Obama being challenged on my versatility. Okay? But that's because, you know what? It's Trump behavior that's trying to distract from the things that we're trying to do with this nonsense and foolishness. One of the reasons why I asked you to call the ARDC, the Attorney Registration and Disciplinary Commission, is because you can call them and ask them about my name, if that's the case. My name is Christopher Joseph Clark. I was born Clarence Christopher Clark. Now, there's my mama right there, okay? I was born Clarence Christopher Clark. Y'all want to know all about me? I'll tell y'all about me, but when I tell you all about me, tell me all about you. Like, why you not working for the school districts no more? That's what I want to know. Tell me all about you after I tell you all about me. I was born Clarence Christopher Clark. My grandfather's name was Columbus. But my mother didn't want to name me Columbus because she was nice enough. She was nice enough to go ahead and not name me Columbus. Because she knew how children were, just like some of the children that behave here and in this atmosphere. So she named me Christopher. And for years, I never knew my name was Clarence. I never knew it. I always thought my name was Chris, or I don't even tell the whole world. But see, I want the whole world to know this. Hey, can we please? It's my turn and it's my floor. It's my turn and it's my floor. It's my play and it's my court. You're out of order. You're out of order. If you are out of, out of order too.
Please stop.
Please be quiet.
While the mayor's talking.
Now, like I was saying, because you don't see how the devil's just trying to get in, nothing to scare him. Boy, I'm telling you, maybe take another sip of water. Now, like I was saying, it takes one to know one. But nevertheless, so I was born Clarence Christopher Clark. Now, my mother didn't name me Columbus because she did not want to burden me with that, so she named me Christopher. And for so many years, I responded to that name because that's all I was called. I wasn't called Clarence, or I was called by my nickname. And when I got to kindergarten, it's the first time I actually found out that my name was Clarence because she introduced me to the classroom and told everyone, this is Clarence. Now, I'm looking up at her like, what are you talking about? You bringing a gang in here? Because I didn't know what the situation was. But I kept that name. And when you go through my Emerson yearbook, because I went to Emerson Elementary School, I went to Whittlin' Brooks, I went to Thorn Ridge, Gulf Falcons. When you look through those books, you see Chris Clark. That's what you see, because that's what had always been known by. Now, here's the sad part of it all. But I tell this story because I asked my mom first, that's number one, and she gave her permission. But I also hope that it touches you a little bit as well. My last memory of my father as a child was when I was approximately three years old. And he was beating on my mother because my mother was a victim of domestic violence. And the only thing that I could remember of my father was the plates falling off of the kitchen table onto the floor and breaking, and her screaming. That's all I could remember. And for years, I had not seen my father. Until approximately at the age of about twenty-five, twenty-six, I jumped in my car and went all the way to Forest City, Arkansas, with no clue of where he would be. But I went on ahead and looked for him anyway. Am I right, man? I went ahead and looked for him anyway. When I got there, I asked them, did they know Clarence Clark? And nobody knew him. And to my sisters and my brothers, I apologize, but I just want to get this out of the way. So I hope that you will accept it. And so I got there and I said, do you know Clarence Clark? And nobody knew Clarence Clark. And I kept riding around. And I finally got to the gas station, and I asked someone if they knew Clarence. And they said, who being? They didn't call him Clarence. They called him by his nickname. And one person at the gas station knew my father and took me to my grandmother's house. And for the first time in about twenty-five, well, twenty-three years, I got a chance to reconnect with my family. I was the same old boy that grew up in the city of Harvey that didn't have a father. But I did have a step-grandfather, and his name was Joseph. And he was the one that I knew all of my life. And so I took the leadership from him. And it helped to shape me and become the man that I am today. So when I got to Arkansas and I got over there, I reconciled with my father. And I say that because if there's any of you who are not reconciled with one of your family members, I would encourage you to do the same. Because see, the story that I'm telling, talking about is not an abnormal story. The story that I'm talking about is not unique. Millions of women, black, white, and otherwise, go through domestic violence all throughout this nation, all throughout this world. And in some places and countries, it's acceptable. Millions of us don't have a relationship with our family members that we should have relationships with. And we sit up and hold the grudge because of something that may have inspired us or may have wounded us, and we can never rebuild. That's what happened here. So at one point in time, even though my brother, my father and I had reconciled, first of all, I didn't like the name, honestly. No offense to Clarence is out there. And I had always been called Christopher. So I asked my mother, the lady who brought me into this world, if it was okay for me to change my name. And she gave her permission. She gave her permission. She didn't go to anybody else. She didn't go to any other haters in the crowd and ask them if it was okay for me to change my name, because that was not a right that any of them had. She gave her permission. And she asked me what I was going to name myself. And I said I was going to name myself Christopher Joseph Clark. And so I went to court and officially and legally changed my name. And see, they don't let criminals legally change their name. There's some people with weird and strange names, but you don't get to change them legally. But I went and I legally changed my name. And I'm proud of that name. One, because my mother said that I could have it. And two, because it gave me an opportunity to have what a lot of people don't have. I can tell you right now, that's the joy, that you have never chose your name. Somebody gave it to you. I got the opportunity to choose, man. They got good. He is, I'm telling you. And so, the reason why I'm up here and the reason why I'm in this position is for a variety of reasons, but mostly it's because I've gone through the struggles that everybody else is going through. And that's a strong rumor right there, just let me add, add. Okay? Because the stuff that she went through, with the men folk that she had to deal with, oh my God. She should be shooting up every single man she sees, honestly. Come on now. So, but at the end of the day, I know somebody will try to turn around and make it into something else. I know that they'll try to turn around and they'll try to say, well, we can't talk about that no more, so... He got one pinky toe bigger than the other, or something like that. If you really want to move forward, I'd invite you, all of you, to come to meet the mayor. It's something we've been doing for quite some time. And there are the people who have come in that have not been happy with what we do. But we still talk to them. You have to be able to talk to your friends and your neighbors in this position. And I will tell you, I don't like, I don't like anybody. But I'm still going to treat them with a degree of decorum and respect. I'm going to be honest with them, whether they like it or not. They're going to get the truth from you. But if you ever want to say you're doing something wrong, you now have the phone numbers that you can call, the people that you can contact. And then they can come and do what they want to do. But see, in 2019, we saw when people come up in here. Y'all forget about that. In 2019, where were you at when they was coming and raiding the police department and the building and the special services department? Where was you at then? Because I didn't hear all that happening at that time. That was you having six people was getting convicted for committing crimes of corruption in the city. Didn't hear nobody did. But now, all of a sudden, you want to speak out like something is going wrong. And the reason why you speak out is because now you have more freedoms than you had before. Because the guy before me was sending that goon squad out to your house. So you don't talk about the goon squad, do you? So, but you're not going to steal my joy. You're not going to steal my joy, I'm telling you. Now, in this, we're saying this, and my mama liked this. There is a tennis player. Her name is Coco Golf. And she is a very impressive young lady, young black lady. And when she won one of her tournaments, she said, and I quote, "I tried my best to carry this with grace, and I've been doing my best." So honestly, to those who thought they were putting water on my fire, you are really adding gas to it. And now I'm really burning so bright right now. And I want all of y'all to know that I have burned it bright with the Holy Spirit and I am filled with some joy that is inside my bones that I cannot explain. I have tried my best not to get up here crying for the all of y'all, but I hope that y'all, at some point in time, will feel the same. May God bless you. May he keep you. May he put his hand on you, make his face to shine upon you and give you peace. Y'all don't understand what peace is like. You know? Because you wouldn't be hating so much, you wouldn't be so screw-faced, you wouldn't be so ugly. You wouldn't be like you know him. Not if you knew him. And you can't tell me that you do, because I see some of the things that go on around here. And then when somebody fight back, you were, oh, Lord.
Say that.
No, no, because I want, I want people, and this is really for, yes, y'all in the audience, this is really for the people who want. They need to understand the power of God and what he does. That's it. This reaches more people than just the people who are in this room. And they need to understand it and what he does. And I don't have to be perfect in order for him to be perfect. And I don't have to be perfect in order for him to perfect me. You know what? Waste my time.
Oh, you're preaching now, you preaching.
Anybody want to come talk to me? Wait, I live in 15705 Page Avenue, regardless of what them people say. That's where I live, that's where I've been. I'm Harvey born and raised and proud of. It's the place where dreams are born and dreams are made, okay? And I am one of those dreams. Because God has put his hand on me in a way that I never thought he would and in a way I know I don't deserve.
Say that.
But on that note, I thank you for your time, I really do. And the chairman entertaining motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Motion by the fifth, second by the third, all my favorites signify by saying aye. Those opposed, hearing none. Thank you. Thank you for the, and God bless every last one of you. And may he keep you. Thank you.